Oh, good stuff.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Preston, Mr. Preston. Ready? Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call to order our... We'd like to call to order our regular city commission meeting for October 2nd, 2019, at 7 o'clock. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Drowski.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. I'm sorry. If we could, everyone, please stand for a moment of silence in our Pledge of Allegiance.
....................................
If we could have the acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for the Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for August 19th, 2019, our community appearance board meeting minutes for August 14th, 2019, and our cultural committee meeting minutes for July 15th, 2019. Motion to approve?
Second.
With a motion from Commissioner Preston, second from Commissioner Parnas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our approval of our city commission meeting agenda for October 2nd, 2019. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, this is a special treat for us, we're going to bring up our chief, Captain Bremlow. You saw the agenda and you had to sit all the way in the back, you're just all the way in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It really gives me a great joy to be here tonight. We have some fantastic deputies that I wanted to recognize, and I'm appreciative to the commission that they allow us to do this, and I would ask that the six deputies that are being recognized, that they could come up, please, up here, so that everyone in Deerfield can see you. The deputies that are here, this is for the last two months, we skipped a month, but I didn't want the deputies that were for the previous month not to be recognized. We have a fantastic group of deputies here, the city is very fortunate. The first group that I want to recognize is dealing with a burglary issue that was going on. We were very fortunate, we got a phone call from a resident, there was some suspicious activity in their neighborhood, they called, the deputies quickly responded, they set up a nice perimeter, they got a little exercise that night, they had to do some running around and chasing bad guys around on foot, but were successful along with aviation and K-9 and caught the burglars, and discovered some other burglaries that had been committed in the area, and were able to return property to some of the residents over there. It was really great work, it was quick work, they got there, and all of them are proactive in that whole area, and that was the... That was the August Employees of the Month, I'm going to call them all out in just a moment. And then on the other side, that was on Alpha Shift, on the other side, a tragic thing that we see is, you know, with our youth, we have mental health issues that are unaddressed as well, in the city as well as everywhere, but we did have... Our deputies were notified of a juvenile who was attempting to commit suicide using a vehicle in a garage, and that whole thing, and had actually barricaded herself into the garage so that help could not get to her. We received notification about that, the deputies responded, they quickly assessed the situation, and had to breach the garage door, they had to break in, basically, and use quite a bit of force to get in there, subjected themselves to carbon monoxide gases in order to get in and rescue the 16-year-old who was attempting to take her own life. It was phenomenal work on their part, you know, they were there, minutes before fire rescue got there because they're in their zones, and they were able to save the life of the 16-year-old daughter, who I checked the other day, and she seems to be doing very well, we're very proud of them. So for those activities, I want to recognize... I have to read each one. Caitlin Spear, relatively new in our district, Deputy Caitlin Spear. Chris Gonzalez isn't here, but he's one of our very proactive deputies on midnight shift as well. Nando Padron, very good. Deputy Booty, very good, thank you. We have a lot of talent in the deputies here, it's a... Dulce, Deputy Dulce, very good. And Chris Manikas. Chris and I have had the pleasure of working together, a couple of different areas around the agency, but thank you very much, you guys are fantastic, and you shine forth for all of us, FBS, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Outstanding job.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In this regard.
Chris, wait.
Do you guys want to come over?
We'd love to, is that right? Sure.
Not in green.
Yes.
Do you guys want to come over?
We'd love to, is that right? Sure.
Not in green.
Yes.
Why don't you have the commission upstairs, and then we'll have you guys speak back.
Exactly right.
While the commission's coming back to sit down, tomorrow night is our Public Safety Night Out at Quiet Waters Park. It's a fantastic event for kids and family, I invite all of the city of Deerfield to come, we have a lot of activities planned for the kids, and we have a lot of displays, a lot of our partners, our corporate partners are helping us out as well, it'll be a fun event, please come out, Quiet Waters, at 6:00 PM. When you come in, you'll see us, we're off to the right there in the very first pavilion, it'll be a great night, so I would invite all of you to please join us with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're now at the public comment portion of the agenda, persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address, and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. As a reminder, this is the time to speak in public comment about items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak about an item that is on the agenda, the time to do that is when the agenda item is called, there'll be a portion after the agenda item for a public comment, and as a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted. We have one person signed up to speak so far, Angel Gomez, from Broward County School Board.
Okay, good evening, everyone, Mayor, Vice Mayor, staff, city of Deerfield Beach. Happy to be here, Angel Gomez, School Board of Broward County, Governmental Affairs. Here, I haven't heard from you guys in a while, so you can run, but you can't hide, I'm here to remind you that I'm here at your service for whatever questions you may have. A couple of updates in regards to what's going on this month and in November, you should have received an email from me, I'm that guy that sends the emails, trying to keep you informed. Starting on, and I know the mayor is part of this already, started on October 14th, is the week of National School Lunch Week, as a graduate of Western High School in 1987, and an educator in Broward County, this body is completely made of school lunch, so feel free to come on that day and pick a school, any school, we'll make you VIPs at any cafe that's open out there in any of the schools, you can have lunch with the principal, the kids, and the rest of the community during that week. Also, at the end of the month, on October 30th, we have something that has happened actually today, but is being observed, on October 30th, which is Walk Bike to School Day, and some schools are participating, you know, elementary schools participate, and then municipalities, so around 7:00 AM, if you have the energy and you want to meet with some kids and bikes and walking, and the principal and the community want to walk to an elementary school and show the kids what it's like to walk in your community in a safe manner, please let me know, I'm happy to make that connection for you. And lastly, you should have received an email from me today in regards to Ed Talk, that's on November 2nd, a great Saturday, an opportunity to participate in think tanks that allow us to serve you better as our customers, in regards to, you know, the kids that the schools in your community serve. Remember that, it's not just kids in Deerfield Beach, as we know, it's kids also from other communities, so your power extends beyond the scope of your municipality boundaries when it comes to the School Board of Broward County. So again, Angel Gomez, anything you need, give me a call, email me, text me anytime, happy to be here in behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, appreciate it. Next, we have Richard Rosenzweig.
Deputy Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Rosenzweig, 97, Farinae, in Deerfield Beach. I want to bring to your attention that I missed several weeks, and I miss you guys terribly. Talking about Honor Flight, we have our last flight of the season coming up on October 19th out of Fort Lauderdale. This is a special flight, and for me, there's a special veteran going to be on this flight, Mr. Jack Bokey, who served in World War II in European Theater, was drafted by the US Army, and served as a translator and interrogator since he spoke about five languages, and turning 95 years old, he's a dual citizen, Canada and United States, and so able to get him on this flight, and I know it's going to be his last major flight at that age, I'm glad he can actually make the flight. So we also always welcome everybody to come to the airport on Saturday the 19th, the flight usually arrives by 8:00, but I suggest if you're going to come down and honor these veterans, you get there like about 6:00, because it does get crowded. We have thousands of people who come to share this event and to thank these veterans for their service, especially now in the Vietnam era, and these veterans were never thanked for their service, were never given any kind of great welcome home, and this is their first chance for us to welcome them and to give them the honors to them, as well as any World War II veterans that are on board, and Korean veterans as well. And as we move through the history of these combats, there'll always be Honor Flights for these veterans, to show them the privilege in this, and veterans don't pay for this flight, this is all privately funded, and we have a great relationship with, right now, Spirit Airlines, who are sponsoring a lot of these flights and helping us with great savings on this, so we can do more flights. We run four flights a year now instead of one, and the first flight I was able to work on, we only had 13 veterans make that trip, we had a charter flight, but they actually buy seat tickets for them to go, so now it's a whole nother program, and believe me, it's a night you will not bid, if you've never been to one, you have no idea, no idea, the enthusiasm, the patriotism, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Fire Department, with the drum majors and such showing up, just everybody turns out for these veterans, and it's a great, great evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda?
Hello, everyone, Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. First of all, I want to wish a happy, healthy New Year to Commissioner Parnas and everyone else of the Jewish faith. Just a very quick question, I'm curious if there is any updated news on whether the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee has made a decision on whether to perform an audit on some of the items discussed at previous commission meetings, and also, has the mayor or any commissioner had any recent conversations with Chip Lamarka, who is a member of the auditing committee regarding this question? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Just a reminder, if we could have everyone please silence their cell phones.
My name is Tina Kelly.
I'm so sorry, ma'am.
My name is Tina Kelly. I have some damages.
Your address for the record, please?
306 Northwest 7th Court, Deerfield Beach.
Thank you.
I have some damages to my RV from trees on my mom's street in the Tora Boulevard. I was taking my RV out of storage, bringing it home to take stuff out and clean it up, and the trees struck me, the trees are all the way in the middle of the road, I can't, could not avoid them at all. I spoke to the city, my parents have been in the house for 50 years, the city planted those trees years ago, and they're right there, like three feet, two feet, three feet off the road, and they're in the middle of the road, the trees are not being maintained. Same thing on the Tora Boulevard, and throughout the city, you'll see these trees, these monstrous trees are planted in the median strip, and they're huge, and people who own RVs or trucks or whatever can't get down the street without being struck by these trees. I got damages on my RV roof, and it then, I was going to not worry about it and just patch the hole, but then, when I was cleaning up, just weeks later, I realized that when I went in my closet, I have water damage in my RV closet, and I need assistance from the city to repair those.
Thank you.
And I would urge that they cut those trees down, I wish that could be done, without saving.
Thank you, ma'am, we'll get an answer for you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public then, city manager, can you address Mr. Hirsch's question and Ms. Kelly's issue?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, I have not heard any updates from the Joint Legislative Audit Committee or any of the representatives in terms of whether or not they've made a decision to conduct the audit at this time, and Ms. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind, if you could just maybe meet this gentleman over here to my left, Mr. Eric Power, just to get your number, so that we can look into this for you and contact you, I appreciate it.
Okay, you're now at the consent portion of the agenda, you have the ability to address these individually, or take them as a group, it looks like there are three items, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to read these individually, do you want to? It's a shortage, you're going to go and read them individually, that's all right. Okay, so we'll start with the first item, item number two, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving contract number JP 119-062020 with the Area Wide Council on Aging of Broward County, Inc., for the Center for Active Aging Emergency Home Energy Assistance Program, authorizing execution of the contract and providing an effective date. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number two? City manager, any comments regarding this?
Mayor, just that this is a contract that we enter into every year, and it provides home energy assistance to the elderly at need, in need, and in... In need of, or not in need, but in, that's what I'm looking for, who almost have their energy bills, their FPNL services, excuse me, cut off, so this is a fund that can help them and support them twice a year, I believe the total that is provided to each resident for the year is $600, if I'm correct, Ms. Donna, $600 a year? You can just nod. Twice a year, okay, thank you, and so this is a program that we participate in every year.
Okay, commission? Commissioner Parnas?
Motion approved.
Second.
With a motion from Commissioner Parnas, second from Commissioner Hudak, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Next item is item number three, resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the HL 109, agreeing with Department of Economic Opportunity for the completion of Phase Four of the Bren Hilde, Richardson, Knowles Memorial Park and Cemetery Project, authorizing the purchase and installation of security cameras and public art pieces, and providing an effective date. Okay, anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Let me close it to the public then, commission? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drowski.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Next item, item number four, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the award of RFP number 2018-19/33 for pre-, post-employment background screening and medical services to First Choice Research and Investigations, LLC, authorizing execution of a contract with First Choice for a two-year term with three additional one-year renewal options, providing an effective date. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number four? Close it to the public, commission?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Hudak? Motion by Commissioner Hudak, second by Commissioner Parnas, all in... Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drowski.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Item number five is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, authorizing city manager David Centucci, acting chief financial officer Sophia Henderson-Taylor, and acting assistant city manager Thomas Good to execute checks on behalf of the city, including checks from the city's bank account maintained by John's Eastern Company, Inc., for payment of workers' compensation and general liability claims, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. City manager, any comments regarding this for the public?
Sure, we are required to have three signatories, two main, and one backup to sign city checks, and so this will update that requirement.
Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on item number five? Close it to the public, commission? Commissioner Parnas?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Commissioner Parnas, second by Commissioner Hudak, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item number six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, changing the name and designation of a certain right-of-way on Southeast 4th Street from Southeast 2nd Ave. to Dixie Highway, to a dual designation in honor of former Mayor Gene Robb, in recognition of her contributions to the community, providing for an effective date. City manager? Any comments?
No, no comments, Mayor.
Okay, anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Just come on up, name and address for the record, please.
Keep my mouth closed, I have done to work. Sandra Jackson, 386 Southwest 35th Avenue, I just want to say I am in agreement with this, as you know, Mayor Robb has done a lot with the city, and she's been the longest mayor up here, so I'll be honest with you, I think she should have had a major street name after her, but I do approve this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
My Commissioners and Mayor?
My name is Steve Corvoi, I live at 4517 San Molina Drive in Coconut Creek, Florida. And basically, I got to know Mayor Gene Robb, and actually, the last time she was voted in, I was her campaign manager, along with several other people, and she served this city for 17 years. She might have been a little feisty, but yet, she served the people, and I think that this should be a no-brainer for all of you, some of you were probably not here, but I spent 30 years in the city, I had a little bagel deli, and I got nothing more to say. So for those of you that were not here, I will vouch that 17 years to serve this city is a difficult thing, so please approve that, it's a simple thing. It's a simple thing. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor.
I'm Michael Robb. Proud to be Jean Robb's son. My brother, Dr. Robbs here, his lovely wife Anne, my lovely wife Susan, and my sister Loretta. Steve, one correction, she served the city for about 17 years. She served the city the entire time she lived here, whether she was in an official capacity or not. She was always involved. So it's more like 58 years. If you had an idea of what 58 years is, I'm 58 years old, so you can tell a lot of hard things come at you during that timeframe. And like Steve said, it's, she may bump heads with all of you from time to time, but nobody can ever, ever question the love she had for the city and everything she did for this city. You can just look around and see what she's accomplished in. So we appreciate this being brought to you all and respect your vote and the honor that you're going to instill upon my mob. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Glory Battle, 1240 Southwest 6th Way. I came here this evening with the intention of letting you all know that I feel that this is poetic justice. You know that Jean and I sat on the day of together and when we voted, or were voting to have that BRK cemetery saved, there was always, hers was always the no vote. After speaking with her daughter this evening, I am convinced that this may be a good street to name after her. I came initially, I was going to ask that you find a major street, one way or the other, because of her, of the statue, of her statue here in this city. But it seems that this staff has already made the opinion that this is the street. I have no problem with that. Like I said, after talking to her daughter, that's one of the streets that she often took to go west. The other one was Southwest Second, I believe. And so I'm going to say again that I agree with this, but what poetic justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I said I would never come back here again, but it would be robbery and dishonor to Mayor Robb and my dad if I didn't get up here and speak. And if you guys wouldn't, do them honor, do her honor and name it after her. She loved this community and she loved these people. All happy.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Laura Penton and I live at 320 Southeast Second Avenue, Deerfield Beach. And I am here to agree with the name of that street of Jean Robb. She was a mayor and she was my neighbor for 28 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Felicia Fortier, 140 Northeast Fifth Street, City of Deerfield. I'm just here to say, as everyone else has said, it was the right thing to do. And as Commissioner Battle said, that section of that street couldn't be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? No one else in the public? I'm gonna close it to the public then. Commission? Commissioner Preston?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I would like to speak first.
Sure. We have Commissioner Preston made the motion, but we're gonna hold out. Commissioner Parnas?
Before we make a motion, it seems that almost at every meeting, we're naming a street after somebody. In the last three, four months, we've named what, four, five? And I really feel we need to do some better vetting by this commission before we... I feel it's very important when we name a statue, a street, an avenue for anybody, that the vetting be done. I'm asking that we delay this for further discussion. I don't, I'm not saying I disapprove. I disapprove of our method of relying on the historical society to make a decision for this commission. I think it's our decision to make. And I think we need a better vetting process.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Parnas. Commissioner Preston?
There's a process for this to take place. It went forward, names were gathered. So the process that's in place was done, completed, and we need to continue with this. It should not be delayed.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Drosky?
To that point, Commissioner, it's my understanding the process was not followed on this particular application. The city attorney has let me know that there's a requirement that homeowners from that particular street have to sign off on it, which wasn't part of the application.
Ms... If you could please, if you could please give it to the clerk. Thank you, ma'am. If you give it to the clerk, thank you.
I was requested last time to provide those despite the historical...
I'm sorry. I'm closing to the public. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
That's my point.
I think the concern, and I did talk to the city manager late today and he did tell me that there were signatures that were provided. We did need this, that is part of the requirement, is to have the signatures and definitely, these signatures are here. I had some concern, look, it's no, it's, I knew Jean Robb. Jean Robb was the first person to call me when I got the endorsement for the Sun Sentinel back in 2009. Of course, she called me at 6:30 in the morning in Jean's special way, "Bill, wake up." And, you know, but any of us, you served 16 years anywhere in public office, you're gonna make enemies and you're gonna bump heads. And it happens. And the truth of the matter is, Jean Robb in her 80s is a lot different than Jean Robb of the 80s. But the city wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for the work that Jean did in the 80s. Not all that I agree with. And it is ironic that we're sitting here talking about naming something after Jean Robb. And I don't like to bring up old stuff, but I will, because it is poetic justice on this particular issue. Jean pulled the name off of the villages of Hillsborough Park. It was actually named after a resident in Gates of Hillsborough because she didn't like the woman back in the 80s. Jean had, um, Jean had earned some gruff when she named the gymnasium after her own husband and without a lot of public input on it. With that said, um, the, I think the process was followed. It's a little late. We did get the signatures. To me, that meets the criteria that I wanted to see. Regardless of where you stood with Jean Robb, her accomplishments in this city can't be denied. And it would be wrong of us to do that. So I'll choose remember the Jean that I knew when I first ran for office. Maybe not so much our last few conversations that we had, certainly while we were sitting up here. And I'm glad Michael's not here to put me on my ass, as she would said. But, you guys remember that?
Yes, I do.
Look, Jean, I hope you're smiling down and kinda laughing at this. And I, you have my support on this, but I will say, to Commissioner Parnas's point, we do need to maybe slow down the roll and make sure this is vetted properly. I don't feel this particular application met that criteria until the very moment that they gave us those extra signatures. So that's really late in the game and we shouldn't be having that. I think it probably would be inappropriate to postpone it, but having been here 10 years ago, we had the same issue. We had all this family coming to town and we had the same issue. We decided to re-change, you and I were sitting up here. We shouldn't do that right now in this moment. I respect what you're saying, but I think it's the right thing to do is to move forward with this. That's okay? We don't need much of that.
So you have a motion?
Commissioner, we have, we have a motion from Commissioner Preston. Do you have any? Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I did.
I cannot support this because when I was a candidate here and Jean Robb made anti-Semitic remarks to quote, "How come District Three only appoints Jews to be their candidate?" I can't support that. When she fought the Black Cemetery tooth and nail, I, I just don't feel I can support that. For four years, she mispronounced, in my opinion deliberately, a fellow commissioner's name. For the public that never heard it, his name is Richard Rosenzweig, not Rosenzweig, which Jean Robb referred to him for four years. I don't feel that, in my opinion, that I can support that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Preston?
I will tell you that more times than not, that I had my differences with Mayor Robb. We were on opposite sides and we stayed there for a long time. But I will also tell you that I had other conversations with her where you saw the real person. And after I was off the commission, she called me actually a lot and we talked and she asked me questions about certain things. And she could have, in a lot of situations, were abrasive, but her heart was good. Her heart was good. She loved the city of Deerfield Beach. And a lot of times when we have these sort of things that happens, we have a choice to make. We can hold on to whatever it is that isolates or divides us, or we simply forgive. And if we use a measure of forgiveness, then it's easier to see the good than it is the bad. But if we don't do that, then we're gonna always see the things that will always alienate us and divide us. She was not a perfect person, but there's not a person in this entire chamber that is. And we should remember that. We all make mistakes. We all say things that we shouldn't say. We all do things that we shouldn't do. And there's not a person that can stand up and say, "Hey, you know what? In all of my life, I got it right." Nobody can claim that. Because you know what? We all make mistakes. But if, and when we do, we have a decision to make. Do we forgive? Or do we hold on to what it is that we think was bad? We have a decision to make tonight. And we should make it on the better half of Jean Robb and her contribution. But aside from that, we also should know, and I'm gonna tell you, I was on the opposite side of her a lot of times, but she had a good heart. She was a good woman. And I'm actually proud to support this.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote then. We have a motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Hudak. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Robb, I'm s...
I'll speak, I'll speak for her. I'm gonna say yes. Always getting the last word, Jean. Always getting the last word.
I'm glad she's coming back and launching.
She is.
All right. Item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida changing the name and designation of a certain right-of-way on Southwest Fourth Street from Southwest Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue to Dixie Highway to a dual designation in honor of Willie Bryant and recognition of his contributions to the community, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public here to comment on item number seven?
Do I need to repeat?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Felicia Fortier, 140 Northeast Fifth Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. On the night when we're trying to honor some of the pioneers of Deerfield...
I'm so sorry. I'm gonna ask you to speak into my microphone.
Okay. On the night when we're trying to honor some of the pioneers of Deerfield, I wish my mother could be here to give you firsthand the contributions that Mr. Willie C. Bryant made to the city of Deerfield Beach. He was one of the men who stood beside her along with Mr. Lincoln McFay, Mr. Water Chance, and other names that you see on buildings and places and streets in this city. No one better to have a street named after them. Not only, and as we know, his father was honored with the street as the first African-American policeman in the city of Deerfield. So that in and of itself lets you know that this family is interwoven through all this whole city. And I'd be proud to say that I knew Mr. Willie C. Bryant and that he was a giant in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on this item? I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida establishing and appointing members to the Audit Committee pursuant to Section 218.391 Florida statutes and providing for an effective date.
Before we do that, anyone from the public here to comment on item number eight?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I have absolutely no objection to any of the three people. I would just, because at least one of them, Vice Mayor Drosky, is here tonight, to just ask you to keep in mind when you are selecting an auditor for the coming year, to keep in mind that there was a lot of financial and procedural items that have been well documented through the last year or two that you can make a case and maybe should have been caught by our auditors. So just to keep that in mind when you are selecting your audit company for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on this item? I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission, any discussion regarding this? No? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hudak, second by Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just two things for this evening. The first being just a little bit of clarification, as there were some comments through the approval of both of the street renaming's, that, just looking for some consensus here that you perhaps would like me to look at with the city attorney, maybe a different way to vet these or a stronger process as we have had four to five this year alone. And if there's anything further you want me to do specifically, you know, please let me know. The second thing that I want to discuss is a proposed Broward County ordinance that will be going before them sometime in December. And what it is, is a seawall requirement that has been going through the planning council and Commissioner Parnas is certainly aware of this and recently voted on it. But what it basically says is that by 2035, every seawall in the county will be required to be at four feet under these circumstances. By 2035, if you require substantial renovation to your seawall or reconstruction to your seawall or new seawall, it... or new seawall, it must be to the four-foot elevation. Additionally, if at any point after 2035, your seawall is considered a nuisance, and by nuisance, what I understand that to mean is that under a high tide condition such as a king tide, if your seawall provides the tidal overflow onto other people's property, you would be deemed a nuisance. Now, the thing about this ordinance is that, and then the same thing applies by 2050 for a five-foot seawall. Okay, so that's what it's going to require. However, this ordinance additionally requires the city to adopt an ordinance that mirrors the Broward County ordinance within two years of their adoption. And it puts the requirement for enforcement of that ordinance on the city. So in essence, what we're going to have coming before the county commission in December, and I believe on October 15th, it goes one more time before the Planning Council, before it's transmitted to the state in the land use plan, that they will, they're enacting this ordinance requiring the municipalities to adopt a similar ordinance and making us enforce it. And so I bring this to your attention as this, you know, in some time in the near future will come before us. And so it's more just a for-your-information point. And I've been in contact with Dr. Jennifer Gerato at Broward County. My concern first and foremost is the amount of public input that they have received. And it's certainly not to the level that I would expect should this have been a city initiative, where I would really find it hard to believe that the majority of owners of seawalls know that this is coming and will be a requirement. So I've asked both our coastal management folks to reach out to the MAB and do some additional coordination along with Dr. Gerato, who is willing to come in and do workshops. And we want to make sure that we get ahead of this for our residents, to make them aware that the county is imposing this. And so we'll be looking to do some public outreach as well.
Commissioner Parnas, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, I do. The Planning Council has decided in a seventeen to two vote, and I was one of the two noes, to push this through. They feel, "We did enough public work. We'll do some more, but we did enough." We notified all the real estate brokers if somebody buys property with a seawall to let them know what the new requirements will be. I opposed it on two points. Number one, the county is taking away our right to govern ourselves. They're making a law and they're saying, "You're going to enforce it." You have no say in it, but you're going to have to do it. We felt that number one, there should be some type of funding. If you happen to have a property that is old, you need a new seawall and it's going to be $130,000, there should be some way that the government, the county, should help you finance it at a low rate so you can afford to do it. But it's now going to go to the state, then it'll come back to the Planning Council. Then it has to go through two readings at the county commission before it'll get passed. So it'll be several months before it comes back from the state. And they will run some workshops with our city manager and will keep the public informed. I just did not feel, representing the city and the Planning Council, that the county should make a rule and say, "But you're going to have to take the brunt of it in your city." I think we have a right to look after our own interests without the county telling us what we have to do. So we'll see what happens and we'll keep you informed as we get more progress from them.
Thank you Commissioner Parnas. City Manager?
That was all the comments I had. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, any items?
Yes, I have one item. I am requesting an executive session concerning the litigation style of Town of Hillsborough Beach v. City of Deerfield Beach. So that will be scheduled soon. I believe actually we have a date for it. It's going to be October 8th, Tuesday at 8:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. District One?
Just a couple of items. First of all, we'll be having Saturday hours on October 12th, 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, so if anybody is interested, please reach on out to Erica so that we can go ahead and schedule it. I did want to bring the commission's attention to, as well as the individuals here in the city. As everybody knows, we have a new visitor on our beach. It's been here for about a week and a week and a half now. And the city is doing everything they can in order to get this visitor of ours, the barge, removed as expeditiously as possible. Depending upon, right now it depends on the weather. We're hopeful that it'll be Friday. The city staff has worked diligently in order to keep everybody apprised of this situation and do everything that we can possibly to get this barge removed. But I want to personally point out one individual, and that's Patrick Barnes. Patrick has been there almost, probably daily for almost 24 hours each day, making sure that this contractor is upholding what he said he was going to do, working with the Coast Guard and other officials. Patrick had no direct control of what has occurred or the remedies to have the barge and its equipment removed from their locations. He has taken the situation very personally, has done everything in his power to help get this situation resolved as expeditiously as possible. Patrick really has a vested interest in our beach. When we did the Guinness Book of World Records, Patrick was one of the individuals from the city who was out there in his scuba gear. So I just wanted to personally thank you, Patrick, for everything that you've done. And my hands off to you. Kowanus Golf, Kowanus has got a golf tournament on October 19th. We definitely need golfers. It'd be great if anybody is interested. It'll be held at Pompano Municipal. So please reach out to Kowanus Deerfield Beach. It's one of our biggest events. Also, I'll be going to Taiwan from November 4th to November 13th for work purposes. So I will not be at the November 5th meeting. Just wanted to make everybody aware of that. One of the things in our weekly reports that disturbed me tremendously is our recycling and most specifically the contamination rate. Right now, it's at 38.57%. The city of plantation is at 17%. Wilton Manor's 20%. We've really got to figure out what we're going to do with our recycling. As everybody knows, anything over 10%, the city plays a premium on this. We've done education. We've been reaching out to people. But the citizens of Deerfield Beach have really got to step up to the plate if we want to make this work. As everybody knows, last year, the commission had to make a difficult decision with regards to recycling. I don't want this commission to be faced with the same situation because our recycling has escalated to, right now, we're at 38.57%. So we've really got to, you know, talk to our neighbors and make sure that we're educating ourselves on the proper way to recycle. And the last thing I have is, October 19th is the Health Expo at the Center for Active Aging. So it's free health screenings. It's from 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So if anybody is interested, it's free health screenings. And it's just another wonderful thing that our Center of Active Aging does for our community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. District Two?
I'd like to ask staff to look into seeing if a crosswalk can be established on Northeast Third Avenue just north of Sample Road. A lot of people will walk from the hospital side over across the street where that 7-Eleven is and from that side back over to the hospital side. And they do that with a lot of danger. There was a person that was hit there sometime back. And so, and there's near misses there all the time. So I'd like to see if we can get a crosswalk there to help protect the people. That would be greatly appreciated. When you get the information on it, I would appreciate you getting back with me, please. The organization Spirit of Giving, each year donate tickets for the Boca Bowl when FAU is playing a team. And it's a chance to get the kids out to go to that game. However, it's always every year a problem with transportation. So that event is on 12/21 of this, and so we can look into now getting some, making sure that transportation will be available for the Boca Bowl. Because these tickets are free. They're given to the Housing Authority. A lot of these kids are in need and it's, you know, you can't give them tickets if they can't get to the game. So we can make sure that we have transportation to that game. It would be greatly appreciated as well. And along with that, I get a lot of calls from people at the Palm wanting to come to the commission meeting and attend things, but they can never get transportation. So how do we solve that? I'd like for staff to look into, because, you know, the focal point have a lot of different buses. And when they get so old, I don't know the process. What do we do with them? But I'd like for the city to look into donating one of those old buses to the Housing Authority so that the people can actually have transportation to whatever they want. I mean, we won't be involved in that. It would just simply be us donating the bus, a bus that's not being used, donate it to the Palms and then now they can come do whatever they want to do with it. But it would be on them. So if you can look into that for me, Mr. City Manager. Okay, thank you. The other thing is, I want to ask, what is our policy for hiring felonies? I want somebody to tell me what that is. Do we hire felonies? And the reason that I bring that up is that once a person has gone through the system, paid their dues to society, they should not be discriminated against. And people have told me that they have put in applications and that sort of thing and they have bypassed. And I hope that's not the case. So I'd like to know, first of all, what our policies is. If a person has paid their dues and their debt to society, they don't need to pay for it for the rest of their life. And so if they've done what they're supposed to do, then I'm good with. There's one guy that was talking to me. He was in prison. And he's been out for over 15 years, not one issue. But he can't get a job. He said, "Commissioner, I need a job. I just want to take care of my house." And he's learned his lesson. But he's applied here and it's been turned away every time. So if somebody can tell me what our policies are, I will greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
I like the tune.
District Three?
I want to announce that in District Three, I'm opening an office in Century Village for the residents. There's 15,000 of them, which is most of my district. And they will be available from 10 to 12 every other Monday, starting this coming Monday. If you live in the village, bring your problems, citations, whatever you have that you need help with. I'll be there from 10 to 12. People who don't live in the village and would like to come and meet with me, just call me and I'll get you in to the clubhouse where my office will be. Thank you. Secondly, I want to compliment all the people in District Three. There's been a 60% improvement in bulk trash being complied with. I ride down through my district almost every day and I see a great improvement where people are not treating the city as a junkyard. In the southern part of my district, pickup day is Tuesday. People are putting their things out on Monday. In the northern part of my district, they put them out on Thursday for Friday pickup. Most people have learned to comply and that makes the city a nicer place. And the nicer the city looks, the better your property values are. Nobody likes to ride through a neighborhood and see torn-up old couches and cabinets laying by the street all week waiting to be picked up. So I want to compliment those people that have read the brochures, that have listened and are complying. That's all I have.
Thank you. District Four, President?
Thank you Mayor. Last Saturday was Junior Anglers Day. I see Mr. Poozer in the back. I want to thank you and your staff for putting together a great event. There were a ton of kids out there. It was a sunshiny day. I caught rocks. I caught maybe breeze, maybe a tan, but I didn't catch any fish. But the kids sure did and they had a great time. Commissioner Hudak was there. The mayor was there. It was a great, it was a really great event. So thank you for putting that on for us. This Saturday is my Saturday office hours here at City Hall from 10 to noon. I think there's only one, as of this morning, there was only one slot left. So if you're interested, please contact City Hall. With respect to the street namings going forward, I'd like to maybe suggest that we implement a moratorium going forward until the city manager and his staff can come up with a new and improved process. I think we need to get it figured out and all be on the same page before we continue. I don't have any problems with what we did tonight and the ones before, but I think going forward, we need a moratorium until we get it figured out and we're all on the same page. Last but certainly not least is my favorite topic, Southwest 10th Street. Yesterday, the District Four Commissioner for the Florida Department of Transportation issued the public notice for the public alternatives for Southwest 10th Street. The hearing is going to be October 29th here at the Doubletree in Deerfield Beach. And as we all suspect, they will probably recommend the north alignment for our city. I think that, one, the public needs to be known about this meeting. Two, I think that we need a pre-coat meeting amongst ourselves to kind of direct the narrative and the dialogue that we want at this meeting. There's going to be residents from Century Village. There's going to be residents from the various neighborhoods in my district and the other areas. And I think we need to have a unified voice. So I don't think that we want to tell people what to say, but I think we need to focus on what we want to say and how we want to say it. And I think we need to figure that out sooner than later because we need to get the word out to our various neighborhoods. Commissioner Parnas in Century Village certainly, because he has multiple associations to deal with, as do I, Independence Bay, Waterford, Waterford Courtyards, Waterford Homes, just to name a few. So for that information to disseminate and trick out to our residents is going to take time. And, you know, I don't know why they wait till the 1st of October to announce a meeting on October 29th that they've known about for months now. It is from 5 until, public hearing begins in the open house at 5 with a formal presentation at 6:30.
That is PM, I'm assuming, right? It is F dot. You never know.
I wouldn't assume anything at F dot, so perhaps. So I would suggest that we have a pre-coat meeting before, it's not really a pre-coat, just a pre-hearing, hearing meeting to discuss, you know, one is the commission and then two, what we want to tell our residents. I think that's important. In that same vein, in your packets, I think last week or the week before, was the letter that I received from Commissioner O'Reilly with his spin on Southwest 10th Street. You're going to have in your packet before the next commission meeting, our proposed response. So I would ask- So I would ask that you please, you know, revisit Jerry O'Reilly's letter and his points that he was making. Please review the counterpoints that we are making so that at the next meeting that we're prepared to discuss and approve the response letter to go out before the, excuse me, the October twenty-nine hearing. So I don't want to, you know, just start your review at the next meeting. I want us to be prepared at the next meeting to discuss and to go forward. So if everyone can please, you know, do their homework and be ready to discuss, have your points ready. If you have any discussions, I know we can't discuss amongst ourselves, but if you want to discuss with staff some of the finer points, I would encourage you to do so before the meeting so that we come in prepared with a response that we can, as a commission, approve and send out. This is a, this is a very important meeting. We have ten days after this meeting for all public to comment, to come in on this project. After that, it's, for, the public comment is basically stopped and the record is closed. So it's basically now is for us to say our, say our piece or we're basically foreclosed from going forward. And there's, you know, it's not perfect, certainly, but there's issues with the project that we need to discuss, you know, going forward. And I think it's very, very important and I can't stress to the public enough how important and urgent it is for them to come to this meeting on October twenty-nine. We as commissioners don't raise the red flag very often, I know. I don't, you know, this has been a long process with the residents on Southwest Ten Street and we've tried to purposely avoid meeting fatigue, to bring the residents to too many meetings where they just get worn out and don't want to come to anymore. But this one on the twenty-ninth, we really, really need them there. I cannot say it enough times and I cannot say how important it is and how it's going to affect Deerfield Beach forever going forward. It will change the landscape of Deerfield Beach forever and it's important that as many people and as many voices as part of this process are heard. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I agree wholeheartedly with the, having a pre-meeting before that. And we need to get the word out right away, come up with a date for that and get that out to all the stakeholders, all the citizenry here. Because this is, this is the drop dead date on this. There's still a lot of small battles to be fought, but this is the major portion of what this project would be moving forward. So I agree with you completely on that. Junior Angler event was phenomenal. I believe we had over two-hundred-and-sixty kids preregistered. That's not just who else showed up. Every kid walked away with a free fishing pole and rod. Some of them caught fish, some of them, most of them caught fish. Some of them didn't. That's what we told them, it's why it's called fishing and not catching. But they had a great time. It was a lot of fun. No one got a hook in the hand, at least I didn't. It was, it was a really good time. Our staff does an outstanding job, but we couldn't do it without the partners that volunteer and participate in that. And there, in a future commission meeting, I'd like them to be recognized and honored for coming forward because it's not just, wasn't just our staff, it was volunteers from the area, from Lighthouse Point, Pompano, just came out. And you had a professional crew out there working with every kid. They knew the species. Fish Angler was a phenomenal sponsor, J and Family. It was really an outstanding group effort and it's one of the best events I think we do here in the city and I'm very proud of that. This Friday, Villages Hillsborough Park at seven P M., we're having movies in the park. We have a Halloween themed movie, Goosebumps Three, I believe it is, it's going to be there. I did get a call from a commissioner from Lighthouse Point who was dealing with one of our code enforcement officers regarding a property here in Deerfield Beach, Sharon Pearson, just to say, while we always get complaints, they wanted to at least let us know when someone does an outstanding job. She was extremely professional, got back to them right away. He didn't have the answers for them right away, but immediately got back, was extremely professional, did an outstanding job. And he really was singing her praises. So at least want to make sure that Sharon Pearson is recognized for that. This Sunday, October sixth at seven thirty A M., we have Dunn's Run starting. Honored to have that here again this year and looking forward to that event. And just a suggestion when it comes to the street renaming, maybe we should do, because it really is our Hall of Fame. This is a big honor to have that. Maybe we limit two per year and we do it once a year. And that way, it'll smooth out the process a little bit and make it very clear what they have to do in order to, you know, signatures, everything like that. But if we, just a suggestion, maybe limit it two per year and do it once a year. We're not required to do two per year, but we keep it that as a maximum cap if that makes everyone feel like a stronger vetting process. There was a question that was asked earlier tonight and I didn't answer and I meant to regarding the J LAC audit. No, I have not spoken to, I don't know if anybody else has spoken to Chip Lamarka regarding that. For me, I didn't feel it was appropriate because considering that, you know, certain people would sit there and accuse us of being in cahoots with it. I've had no conversation with Chip Lamarka regarding it. Sure, a certain little French poodle in Boca will start bleeding from his eyes if I said I did, but I didn't. And I think it's up to staff to kind of get the ball rolling on that. I think we've given direction and directive and I, hopefully that will take care of itself and they will move forward with this because that's what we all wanted, wanted to happen. Other than that, I believe that is everything I have. Am I missing anything? No? Okay. For all of you, thank you for coming out tonight in the rain. We appreciate it. And looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
No problem.
I got a picture, who want a picture? I got a picture, a big picture in my car.
Oh, you did? He's the man.
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Good to see you.
Life is good?
Never complain. Always. First stop, I die.
You, you work hard.
I try, man.
You're, you're talented.
Just want to say bye, Lee.
Who, President?
Yeah, Partes?
Yeah.
Got him the same.
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, when it's afraid to come, I might be a cop.
Yeah, I want to tell him that, too.
Yeah, I want to tell him that, too.
Thank you all.
That's it done now.
Yep.
Right.
You know, I guess.
Oh.
I had him with my umbrella.
No, it ain't worth it.
That's right.
That's right.
I'm Mike's wife, Susan.
Oh, hi.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, yeah.
So that was, well, thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
They bring the pictures?
Yeah.
So I would have, you know, she wanted to do, which is, she's in that way, she's funny.
Good old Dave.
Yeah, you know what?
That's the best picture, I have that picture.
Good.